There we go. Good evening and welcome to the new boardroom. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a boardwork session on Thursday, May 4th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. Mark Henry, ED Admin Building located at 11440 Matsky Road, Cypress, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, May 8th, 2023 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law off script. Mark, we really ought to change that and just say the Dr. Mark Henry as opposed to Mark Henry EDD.
What's it say on the building? Does it say Mark Henry EDD?
It does. Back to the script. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and to hear the matters discussed. Audience members may not participate in the meeting outside the designated agenda items for citizen participation or public comment. Disruption of the meeting by any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by the board president or the board's counsel as a meeting parliamentarian. Continued or repeated disruption of any board meeting by words or actions may result in removal or loss of the privilege to attend the meeting. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled on the order listed on the notice. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode, and I'm turning mine off right now. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. This evening, we do not have elected officials with us. We have no Boy Scouts and no Girl Scouts with us this evening. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, remarks and recognitions. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, remarks and recognitions, board comments, portions of reports and citizen participation will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, May 8th, 2023. At each open meeting of the board, patrons who have registered in accordance with procedures established by BED regulation may address the board during the designated agenda comments period prior to the board's consideration or action on the item. Unless the agenda is otherwise rearranged by the board president during the meeting, agenda comments will generally be taken in the order of each agenda item. For detailed information and instructions on registering to speak under agenda comments, please go to the district website at www.cfiisd.net. Patrons who have registered to speak this evening may see the order of names listed on the screen behind me. Before your name is called, please move forward and sit in one of the two reserved seats on the front row to my right, audience left. When you approach the podium, and as you can see, there are two, one to my right and one to your left, you'll see a monitor inside the podium. When it is your time to begin speaking, a digital presentation timer will be displayed at the top of the monitor. The timer will be set in accordance with the number of speakers registered this evening. For this evening's meeting, there will be a 15-second warning to wrap up your comments. That will be corrected to a 30-second warning for Monday's board meeting. And we do have a few distinguished guests with us this evening, and these are some individuals who helped make it possible for this building to be here tonight, outside of taxpayers, of course, who the largest thank you goes to. PBK and team led by Eric Smith. Are you in the audience?
Yeah, there's Eric.
And Eric, I think you have your whole team with you, and this won't happen every night, but please stand up. You have a nice voice, and please introduce who's here with you this evening.
Debra Raja Ross, Mark Martin, Sarah Stolman, Bill White, and Sutter.
And then with Satterfield and Ponteicas. They were the project team for this building. Charlie Foot, vote rather, John Marshall.
I don't think John's here.
Thanks both of you all for being here. This is truly a wonderful evening. We will now proceed with items 3B and 3C of the reports portion of this agenda. Item 3A and 3D will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, May 8th. However, we do have a speaker this evening for item 3A. Item 3A, the administration will present an oral report on the preliminary budget for the 2023-2024 school year. Our speaker this evening is Melissa Rau.
I don't see Melissa. Maybe she's coming Monday.
3B, the administration will provide a report on the high school health course for local credit. Presenters, Dr. Linda Macias and Dr. Heather Bergman. We have a number of speakers, nine to be precise. Our first speaker this evening is Sarah Mueller, or it might be Sarah Miller, and you can correct me when you get to the microphone. So before you start, how do you pronounce your last name properly?
It's Sarah Miller.
Miller, very good. We have a new secretary for tonight for the timer, but I already went over the regulations. The difference is there will be a 15-second notification to let you wrap up. Ms. Honeman, are you ready?
Yes, just another note that you will see a yellow light flash on the monitor in front of you letting you know when you have 15 seconds left, and then at that time wrap up your comments.
Okay, thank you.
And the timer will start when you say your first word.
Okay. I'm Sarah Miller. I'm a health teacher at Cypress Ranch High School, and I've been there for 12 years. Good evening. Health has been a longstanding requirement for students in our district and most other surrounding districts. I ask you today, what purpose would removing health education serve? I am passionate about teaching this content because I witness with my own eyes as a teacher, as well as a coach, the various struggles that our students face daily. Health provides students with tools to save the lives of others. CPR and first aid are critical in sustaining life until medical help arrives. Regardless of socioeconomic differences throughout our district, all students are taught these skills free of charge. Our students should feel prepared to provide assistance in the situations that occur both in and outside of school. In addition, mental health concerns and risky behaviors like drug and alcohol are two additional topics I believe are incredibly relevant to our current students. If we don't educate students about, oh, sorry. In addition, mental health concerns in risky behaviors like drug and alcohol are two additional topics I believe are incredibly relevant to our students. If we don't educate students about mental health, who will? Who will help students understand the pathway to seeking help? Who will help our students understand that seeking help isn't wrong or for the weak? Who will help our students develop coping skills when situations arise? The benefits are clear, and every child deserves to have supportive adults helping them develop these critical skills and habits. Setting students up to thrive should be the school's biggest priority, and the health curriculum should be a part of it. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Ashley King.
Good afternoon. Today, I want to talk to you, the board, about the importance of health education. The health education processes of teaching its students how to live healthy lives by making informed decisions about their physical, mental, and social health, how to recognize warning signs in themselves and in their peers, and how to seek help when you need it. This includes teaching your sons, your daughters, your grandchildren, the students that you swore to serve by being a CFISD board member. I want to share some statistics from the World Health Organization, the CDC, drug abuse statistics, and the DEA. Globally, 1 in 7, 10 to 19-year-olds experience a mental disorder accounting for 13% of the global burden of disease in this age group. According to new data, in 2021, 37% of high school students reported they experienced poor mental health during the COVID-19 pandemic, and 44% they reported they persistently felt sad or hopelessness in the past year. The leading cause of death among adolescents 15 to 19 years, according to the CDC, are as follows: accidents, homicide, and suicide. 70 to 90% of out-of-hospital cardiac arrests die before reaching the hospital. Youth drug abuse is a high-profile public health concern, with at least 1 in 18 teenagers abusing illicit substance in the past year. And lastly, the DEA laboratory has found that of the fentanyl-laced fake prescription pills analyzed in 2022, 6 out of the 10 now contain a potentially lethal dose of fentanyl. This is an increase from the previous year of 4 out of 10. These are just some of the important topics that we cover in health and can prevent by health education. We try to instill these students that your health is the most important asset. Without good health, it is difficult to pursue your goals and dreams, to enjoy life, and to be there for the people that you care about. Learning health in high school can help you establish healthy habits that will serve you and the people around you for the rest of your life. Most people have this misconception that it won't happen to me, or that you can just learn it at home. But unfortunately, this is happening throughout our district, and these topics are not being taught or enforced in the majority of homes. I believe that with the health education, we truly make a difference in the lives of students of CFISD, so that do not become one of these statistics. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teddy Carrier.
Coach Carrier's not here, so I'm Brad Bearwinkle. I'm the department chair at Bridgeland High School for Health and PE.
So just a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Our next speaker is Brad Bearwinkle.
Thank you, guys, for having us here, first of all. I am Brad Bearwinkle. I'm the department chair at Bridgeland High School for PE and Health. I would have wrote something down, but I'm old and I'm blind, and I couldn't read the writing anyway, so I'm going to have to talk from the heart a little bit here. The reason why we're here, you know, it stems from the new textbook that's coming out, that we're trying to vote on and everything else, and we know how worried people are about different words in textbooks and what may be being taught to their sons and daughters. And I'm here to say, I've been 16 years in this district teaching health, and what we cover, the topics that we cover, when we talk about mental health, there's a mental health epidemic with our kids. We talk about nutrition. There's an obesity epidemic with our kids. We talk about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs. There's a fentanyl opioid epidemic with our kids. We talk about relationships. You know, there's so many words from COVID, and whatever you believe or not, there are things that are happening to us communication-wise that are different than they were three or four years ago. And in health, it is the only class that we have in high school that covers all these topics. We're not here to go to the right or to the left. We all teach right down the middle. We teach right, we talk about what's pertinent, what's going on, and I just want to assure you guys that a book is 400 pages long. We have health for one semester, and we can't cover all 400 pages. So we cover the very most important topics, and those are the mental health, the nutrition and fitness, the alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and the relationships that, the way, healthy relationships that our students should have. So health is a great course. It's the only course in the high school that covers it, and I hope that you guys want to keep it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Kachemeyer Infante.
Did a really good job with that, by the way. Kachemeyer Infante.
Thank you, sir.
It's long. Forgive me, I'm not reading a text message. I just typed it on my phone because I've been making multiple adjustments. It's an interesting conversation to me because I stand here as a 22-year veteran teacher. 21 years of that, I was an English Language Arts teacher. So I've been involved in conversations about the content of text and whether the content of that text, especially the sensitive items, if the value of the text itself is worthy of teaching, if these sensitive items are, fall within the context of questionable, right? So I've had those conversations in English team meetings. I've had those conversations with administrators and board members about if the text itself is that inflammatory, that the actual quality of the material no longer holds value, then the text is omitted. But no one would have ever discussed the conversation of deleting English Language Arts from a curriculum in order to protect the kids from a text that could be modified, omitted, find another text that matches the context that the teachers are attempting to provide without that material in it. I am a father of six, four of which are going to graduate from Cyfair ISD, and to me, as a parent and as a teacher, it is a unique conversation. The world that we live in with increasing sedentary lifestyles, obesity and obesity-related illnesses, in a world where self-medication with prescription, over-the-counter, and illegal drugs is becoming more rampant, it just, it becomes concerning to me that we would fall within the context of possibly throwing the baby out with the bathwater when everybody in front of us is explaining how integral health education is to our kids.
Sir, your time's expired.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly Claire.
Sir, good evening. My name is Kelly Claire, and I'm a graduate of Jersey Village High School, a 25-year employee of the Cyfair ISD, a coach and health teacher at Cypress Woods High School, as well as a resident of the district. I'm also a parent of a current Cyfair student and a Cyfair graduate. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss some of the concerns tonight with the board and other stakeholders having the district that have with regards to the health classes being taught at the high school level. After viewing last month's board meeting, my conclusion was there's a very small portion of the health curriculum that concerns some of the board and other members of the community, that piece being the HSU. It's such a small piece, and it shouldn't overshadow the good that comes out of this class. We teach about diet, nutrition, exercise. We discuss the dangers of alcohol, tobacco, vape use. Since COVID, our mental health units help students identify signs and avenues of support when dealing with a multitude of mental health issues. However, as a coach, the unit that I'm most passionate about is our first aid unit. When I taught CPR just last week, I asked my classes, I said, "How many of you know CPR?" And out of all my classes, six kids raised their hand. Looking at just one freshman class from any one high school, we're going to demonstrate and teach CPR, first aid, AED training through our health classes, over 800 students. I don't know of another class that exposes the students those sets of skills that could literally save another person's life in an emergency. It seems to me that by eliminating an entire health course, you'd be eliminating a tremendous amount of good that this course provides. I would like to invite all of you to the health classes at Woods, whether it be this year or next, come observe and experience what our students learn throughout the semester, day in and day out. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Hodges.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Hodges. I'm a health teacher at Cyfair High School, and I've been teaching for 23 years. Here are some of the things our students have said about our health classes at Cyfair. I've realized I'm not alone. It has helped me with my everyday life. Fast food and drugs and alcohol aren't as glamorous as people make them sound. I'm okay even when I'm not, and I have support. I know I can save a life now. I wish I understood how much this class would mean to me, and I would have started paying attention a lot sooner. 97.3% of our students remember and recognize all the units. HSU isn't one of them. The curriculum we get to teach, we get to teach our students allows them the opportunity to learn and better understand their growth and development as teachers, as teenagers, excuse me. It gives them the ability to explore and navigate through their potential as high school students in a safe environment. In our health classes, we teach confidence and respect for self and others. We dive into setting boundaries and having healthy relationships with family and friends. We discuss good sleeping habits, the dangers of too much technology, and the effects both can have on mental health. We get comfortable with the idea that it's okay to not be okay sometimes, but we also learn that we must find solutions for getting better. Our students learn that fitness and nutrition go hand-in-hand with feeling good about oneself, and good habits lead to even better mental health. They get a chance to learn and simulate the lifesaving measures of first aid, including CPR, and get the needed practice to perform those measures under pressure. We share the reality of tobacco, alcohol, and drugs not only in the fully-developed body and brain of adults, but how harmful they are to the undeveloped brain and body of teenagers. At the end of a full semester of discovering and learning about themselves and the very basics of how they can exist in life, we hope that they walk away a little more confident at being curious at all the great things that they can learn in a school environment, a little more comfortable in doing the right thing and making good decisions, and a little braver when standing up for their values and their beliefs when faced with negative peer pressure. Our goal as health teachers is to help our students achieve all of theirs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy DeHaan.
Good evening, board members, and thank you for allowing me to speak. At a recent board meeting to discuss a human sexuality health curriculum, it was suggested by board members to not require the health course as a required credit for graduation. I was at Waller ISD board meeting last year where Linda Macias was also in attendance when it was voted to amend their graduation requirements to make their health course elective, thereby allowing flexibility for students to seek other electives supporting their interest in college aspirations. In 2009, Texas state law was changed, removing human sexuality health as a required course for high school. We want CFISD to be the leader as the third-largest district in the state, yet over one-half of the districts no longer require this course for graduation. By continuing this requirement, it further hinders those who are in advanced-level coursework as it is classified as an on-level course. The GPA and credit are affected and puts them at a disadvantage in comparison to other districts. Why is this an issue? Board members and parents express concerns about the inability to adequately review the Good Heart Wilcox resource material and curriculum. Bullet points cannot provide the complete content of the 823-page text being used. Let's be clear, the TEES do not require, but is only recommended as a health course at the high school level, or require the use of Good Heart Wilcox. A district may write their own curriculum or use other resources. Promises were made during the board meeting that revisions would ensue of the GW resource and curriculum, yet there was no accountability process for the SHAC or the board to review approved proposed changes. Parents want to be able to support their children's education as they see fit, and that matches with their values. Board members then offered that they would support a modification of requirement as a required course for graduation because of these concerns. The solution is clear. Students should be given the opportunity to earn other credits or endorsements for graduation that will enhance their academic achievement. By removing this requirement, the board can ensure that the CFISD maintains the A rating for academic excellence by modifying this graduation requirement. This policy will go far in elevating the portrait of CFISD graduates. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Holly Achular. And please correct my pronunciation of your last name.
Well, I have to admit, I'm kind of like the gentleman before. I have old eyes, and if you can see my font on my notes, I signed up on my phone, so it's, my name is Holly Schooler.
Holly Schooler.
Oops. Hello, my name is Holly Schooler. I am here tonight in two capacities. First, as the parent of three of my own children, and then as the parent of the over 300-plus children whose lives I have the honor and opportunity to impact through the year. Tonight, I hope to offer the board my unique dual perspective in order to keep the health course in our curriculum as a local credit. I think we can all agree that during the formative years, teens establish habits and foundations of health through identifying healthy choices and risky behaviors. We all share the same goal, health and happiness, so the learning opportunities available to them are personally accessible. As a parent to my three children, I actively discuss with them good choices and bad choices. Not only the consequences they will face, but the impact that those who know and love them will face as a result of their choices. I merely plant the seeds, check their progress, nurture and continue the dialogue, and celebrate them, as I will my own senior as she walks across the stage the 24th of May and into the next phase of her life. You know who has also been her parent, planted the seeds, checked her progress, and is available with the continuing dialogue, her health teacher. The impact of the curriculum, the knowledge and wisdom of the teacher, and the discussions in the class reinforce the foundations as we parents initially lay down. Please do not rob our children of the knowledge that will undoubtedly empower them to make the right choices. The CFISD mission statement charges us as teachers, administrators, and support staff to maximize every student's potential through rigorous and relevant learning experiences, preparing students to be 21st-century global leaders, leaders, not merely participants in life. And this is only possible when they are healthy and avoiding risky behaviors. I implore you, let's choose not to obliterate this relevant learning experience.
Please stop.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Macias, you have a presentation for us?
Good evening, President Jackson, trustees, and Dr. Henry. This evening, per your request, I will be sharing information about the high school health one course. This course, as you've heard already, is a .5 local graduation requirement in Cyfair ISD. Before I actually, whoops, before I actually do anything here, let me see, there we go. There we go. Before I actually get into the details of the course, I want to make sure that we are all clear about the setup of this course. So we have, the larger part of this course is the high school health text. That is the foundation, the bulk of what is covered in this course. The smaller portion there that you see is a human sexuality instruction text or TEES. The high school texts are required, so they are required to be taught. They're not optional. They can, they do not have to be taught in a standalone course, but they are required to be taught. The human sexuality instruction texts are opt-in, as you know. Parents decide to opt their students in to all or different lessons of that course. And in fact, the board determines where the human sexuality instruction will be taught in Cyfair ISD. And you recall, I think somebody mentioned just a couple of months ago, you approved a textbook to be used for the curriculum to be used in the high school health for the texts and also for the human sexuality instruction. So I have it broken up like this because you have health, the texts that are required, and then you have the opt-in human sexuality instruction. It is, that is not, that is not required, it's opt-in, but the other is required. So I want to give you just a little bit of history regarding this course. So in the 2010-11 school year, the health course was removed from the state graduation requirement by the Texas Education Agency, the Texas, the State Board of Education, actually. But as I just mentioned, the health texts are still required. Districts were given an option to continue providing the course, to retain the course. And in Cyfair, along with other districts throughout the state and in our surrounding districts, many districts chose to keep the course because they already had certified teachers that could continue delivering the instruction, and the texts had to be covered. And as I just said, it is a .5 local graduation requirement. And, and as I just said, it is a point-five local graduation requirement. Now, I think you've heard through some of our speakers today, these are the main areas that are actually covered in the health, in the health course. And I'm going to talk about health, not Human Sexuality Instruction, because that is separate. I'm just talking about the actual health course. And so, you have, we have mental health. And in that course, there, there is instruction regarding coping mechanisms, social-emotional environment, actions that promote positive, negative self-esteem, personality, time management, mental disorders, treatments, interventions, addiction, anxiety disorders, schizophrenia, suicide. All of these are a sampling of the topics that are covered in this, in this unit. We've got the nutrition and fitness area as well. In there, they talk about the body composition and flexibility, muscular strength and endurance, cardio-respiratory endurance, types of exercises, metabolism, calorie, weight training, injuries, how you prevent the injuries. They talk about eating disorders. They talk about diet. So, lots of important lifetime lessons that are taught in, in this area. We also have dating and, and healthy relationships that's covered in, in this course. So, dating expectations, abuse, myths regarding dating. They talk about healthy relationships and setting boundaries, and, and they talk about families and types of families. They talk about marriage and, and child abuse and communication and ways that you can get counseling. All of that is covered in, in this area. And, and then there's the tobacco, alcohol, and, and vaping. So, they talk about the psychological effects of withdrawal syndrome. Talk about smoking and, and the harmfulness of that, and tobacco and, and vaping. They, they talk about examples of alcohol abuse, drinking and pregnancy, alcoholism. They talk about how to get help. They talk about peer pressure and how, and how you can work through that and how you can support peers as well. And then drug prevention. You know, they talk about drug abuse and, and illegal, and legal medications, narcotics. They talk about designer drugs, vaccines, antidepressants, antibiotics. It's a whole array of different topics that are useful to, to our students now, but also in the future. And first aid and, and in CPR, our kids can be certified in CPR in, in that class. And in fact, I forgot to mention, this, these, this picture here is actually former, some, former students who took health. And there was a story about them several years ago because they were, they saved a life in the neighborhood pool. And they credited that to having the skill set that they learned in health. The CPR class and, and their opportunity to stay calm and, and keep everybody calm while medical assistance came to them. So I wanted, I just put that picture in there for them. And all of these lifelong important lessons are taught with a Texas-certified teacher. So our teachers take this content seriously, and they believe, as you heard, in the value of this, of this course. So I wanted to walk you through a timeline that shows the process that has been evolving since the fall regarding our current eighth-grade students who, at this time, are on target to have health, high school health, as a graduation requirement. So if you, so if you look at the, at the timeline, you can see that this process begins in the fall. And in the fall, we have a, a curriculum that's called the Advisory Curriculum. And during this time, our students are learning about endorsements and graduation requirements and CTE pathways and electives, and they're beginning to work on their four-year plan. In January, there's parent informational meetings and, and the feeder high schools are providing activities and elective fairs so they can know what, what courses are out there and, and course selections. And then in March, the campus teams and parents start reviewing all of those selections and staffing allocations, and hiring begins, and the master schedule starts falling in place. And in May, they finalize staffing and master schedules. I share all of this with you because these students have already made their course selections and health is in that four-year plan already. And in fact, some of our students, our rising ninth graders, will be taking health this summer because it is an option to take health between your eighth and ninth grade year as, as, uh, as rising ninth graders. So all of this is in place now. Teachers have, have been hired for the different courses that are, need to be selected. So, with what I just shared, we actually have two graduating cohorts at this time that, that would have health as a graduation requirement. One is the class of twenty-five, twenty-six, so our current ninth graders. And so, most of these students already took health. So they took health in ninth grade, or they might have taken health in summer school, last year's summer school. And some of them have not taken health. Some of them have chosen to wait to take the health credit, so they may take it in their tenth grade year or eleventh grade year or their twelfth grade year. There's some that fall in that category. And then we have the class of twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's the class that I just showed you the timeline for. That group of students, some will take health this summer. Most will take, will take health next year as ninth graders, and then some will take health as a tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade student. So I thought you might like the information about our teachers. So we have about sixty teachers who are teaching one or more periods of health. Three of those teachers have, only have a health certification. They don't have any other certification. Fifteen of them have health and a PE certification. Six of them have health, PE, plus a non-high school certification. So, so they can, if they don't teach health or PE, then they have to either drop down to the elementary or the middle school level to be able to teach them whatever certification they have. And then thirty-six of them have health plus different certifications at the high school level. And then finally, I thought you would like a little input with what our high school principals have to say about the course. All twelve of them support keeping hi, um, high school health, all twelve of them. And these are some things that, that they, that they have shared. You can see, you can see, they talk about that the curriculum is, is, is there for healthy living and, and positive, and a positive lifestyle. They talk about mental health issues. They talk about losing kids to, to suicide and, and drug abuse. They talk about their teachers believing in, in this course. They've shared that they have students who have OD'd, and, and then the, the parents in the community have questions about how parents are being informed and how students are learning about these risks. And they're able to share with their community and their parents that this is covered through the health class. They have concerns about how the scheduling would work. We have some courses that are, that are, that are also half-credit, but not a lot of them. This course pairs up with, with the PACE course. They have concerns regarding, is it, are we possibly going to have an excess of PE teachers? And then, as, as has been said already, they, they feel that, that, that the, the health course, just being able to get that CPR certificate benefits the entire community. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions. Let me go to my right, Scott Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Linda, I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. You mentioned on here on the page four, the content for healthy living. You referenced TEACs two-point-eight, eight, and three and five. What subchapter of the TEACs are we referring to, please?
I would have, I need to look that up. Mr. Henry and I can have that for you on Monday.
I think you're looking at chapter one-fifteen. Because I talked to three different State Board of Education members this week and asked them specifically that question, was what requirements and TEACs are required for students since House Bill Five eliminated health in Texas? And they all had a puzzled look on their face and said, "There are no TEACs required for any students in health, for Texas students. House Bill Five eliminated that." And I said, "Well, I see in the TEACs in chapter one-fifteen, section one, section thirty-seven and thirty-eight, which goes in high school health classes." The only thing it says, it does reference the things you're talking about, which I believe is what you're talking about. We can clarify that later. But the thing that they said was, A, section A, this course is recommended for students grades nine through twelve, not required. However, middle school it says required, elementary it says required. So you might want to double-check that, because I did also look Louisville ISD, Klein ISD, Waller, which I think you were at Waller's meeting when this happened, but the chief affidavit officer actually said, recommend the board that remove for students, I have their board minutes agenda, to complete high school health in order to graduate. This is not a state requirement for graduation. It provides students more flexibility when selecting their course selections. And then I might want to go ahead and make a motion. That was from June of this, this last year. I do have the state requirements as well, and I don't see health on here as well. So that's why I'm a little confused on this. I also looked at ESCs, a couple ESCs, and they all had FAQs on health. It's not a requirement. And that, the State Board of Education, three people said that fifty percent of all schools in Texas do not even have health as a requirement. So that's, that's my confusion. I'm, you say one thing, but I want to make sure we get that really clarified to us so we can make a really good decision going forward. Because if it is in the TEACs, that's one thing, but if it's, if you're referencing chapter one-fifteen, sections eleven and twelve, is not required in the state of Texas, according to three State Board of Education members.
So the texts that we have are the ones that are provided to us from the Texas Education Agency. And I can print a copy of those and have them for you on Monday. And the, some of the districts that you have referenced, I have talked to as well. And, in fact, we just talked to one this week who is, who is eliminating the, the health curriculum, but they are not eliminating it for a cohort that has already begun with that curriculum. And in fact, one of them has actually changed the course that they are, are taking. I'm looking for the habit in here. But when I looked at that, I've got, there's texts that go along with that. So, I'm going to have to go back and pull that information for you. And the texts that, that are, that go along with that course are very much aligned to just the health texts that we also have. But I will get that information for you.
Thank you very much, Linda.
Natalie.
I just want to start first by saying happy birthday to our colleague Scott tonight. Great way to spend your birthday. We appreciate you being here. And I also want to thank the health teachers and coaches who came. You guys are true MVPs, and you're hard for our kids, and their physical, mental, and social health is appreciated. I did have a similar question, Linda, so maybe when you provide that information Monday. I know that I was a principal in Spring Branch when we made, when that law came out and we made the decision to make it an optional graduation requirement, and I do not remember there being a TEACs discussion and having to take those into English or science or anything of that nature. So I had the exact same question about whether those were really required or not within the change after that code. And so, I'll look for that answer.
I'll bring, I'll have that for you on Monday because there are standards for the, for health. So I'll bring that for you on Monday.
And I also, I had the question then about, my own daughter did PACE and health, and, you know, we did that without incident, and we, you know, appreciated actually that sequence of a way to introduce kids into our high school experience. But I do think that I also didn't vote for the, the Human Sexuality textbook, and then the concern was it was going to be in every classroom, no matter what. So I did, I appreciated that comment about separating those things out, about what, what is offered where. So I thought there was some wisdom in asking that question about, you know, what are, what are ways to look at these things? And then also, I wondered about other innovative courses. I went to the TA website, just listing it, what are other semester courses? I know there's a lot of interest. We've heard at board meetings about, like, personal finance, other areas of development of young people that might be something that could be offered at the choice of a parent that could also be a semester course to go along with the PACE class. So I wondered if we've looked at any other courses. What we have in our current, I know there's not a lot. I've looked in our current course catalog. But what other courses might be out there? Looking in the TA list of innovative, this is not even just other courses, just the innovative courses. I see certain CTE things that hit some of these health mentions that we've had from our teachers today. I see some that hit some of the, let's see. Actually, several in here that, that hit at the different areas that are other approved courses that may be able to, other ways to teach the content with a depth. And then I'm also intrigued by the mention about advanced, you know, the advanced credit that's available for certain classes, knowing that this does give kids an unweighted option. So I would love to see what we have available, what might be some other things being offered in other districts in our region that are one, one semester electives or advanced one semester electives.
And we, we have looked at, at that Dr. Blasen game, and we do have some courses. We have other courses, I should say, that, that are, have credit, not just the, the PACE or the health. We have other courses as well. We've also looked to see if there are other courses that are not available for ninth grade, but for tenth and eleventh, that we could restructure a little bit so that they might become available as well, if, if, if that's what the board chose for us to do.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions. Appreciate it.
To my left, Lucas.
To all of our health teachers and professionals, thank you. I hear your heart, and thank you for your time this evening to testify. I think my questions have already been answered, or actually not answered, but asked by my colleagues. So I have no questions at this time.
Debbie.
I also want to thank all of our health teachers that are present and, present tonight because your passion for what you are teaching your students and what they are learning is very evident. And I know sometimes we assume because we consider ourselves good parents and what, we take care of teaching our kids what needs to be taught, that every parent is doing that, and that is not the case. We have many students, I am sure, that can benefit from this. And not only that, but unless your kids were different, when mine were in high school, they didn't think I knew anything. And if it came from me, it couldn't be right. Until they got into college and on their own, and they finally discovered that, you know, mom and dad really were smart and did know something. But I think we have to look at our student population overall, and we need to be teaching what benefits the majority of our students and not just a few. I, a question, Dr. Macias. I know the last few years, summer school has been free. Is health a class that could be taken in summer school that would be free? Or is there a charge?
No, ma'am. Right now, all, everything we offer in summer school is at no cost to parents.
Okay. So, a student, because I believe my, my, my two grandchildren, I, two of them, I believe, took it in summer school a few years back. But, you know, it's in summer school and it's free, so if a parent was concerned about a GPA, then they would actually, if they took it in summer school, have a, an additional half-credit? Would that be correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, you answered my questions. Thank you.
Julie.
Thank you very much for the report and for the information about the course, and, and I will echo my colleagues. It's, it's so helpful to hear from the actual teachers in the classroom as to how you feel about the course and about how you feel about the value for your students, because you're the ones in the classroom with the kids every day, and so you get... And so you get that immediate feedback, I'm assuming, from your students about whether the information is valuable, relevant, and impactful. So I appreciate your sharing your perspectives. Speaking of relevant, valuable, and impactful, when looking at the list of TEACs that are covered through the high school health class, I, mental health, nutrition and fitness, dating and healthy relationships, tobacco, alcohol, and vaping, drug prevention, first aid, and CPR, these are all topics that are incredibly valuable for our students to learn. As a parent, just as Debbie mentioned, it's, you know, we do our best to teach our children, but it's so helpful when that teaching is reinforced at school. There may be some kids who don't receive this information at home, but even if they do, it is very helpful for them to hear it again, or to hear a different source, or to hear their peers share information, stories, so that they can really support each other and support what's being taught at home by the parents. So I definitely see value in that. If these TEACs, I guess there's a question if the TEACs are actually, or texts, are actually required or not. If they're required by the state and these school districts are not teaching a health class, they have to be putting these somewhere else. So it's going into, do we know where those, where it's going into in other school districts?
We asked that question, and it was very vague. We surveyed some school districts around us, and it was very vague as to where those texts might be placed. Some of them said some would, some would go into PE, but the PE texts have changed as well, and they're more robust, so it's pretty packed.
So that would be a challenge as to finding an alternative place to put those TEACs that they require by the state. Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome.
As always, thank you for a good thorough presentation. I too appreciate teachers coming here to speak. Lucas, I heard things differently. I heard questions asked, and I heard questions answered. So I would disagree with your characterization that you're waiting for answers to questions that were asked that were not answered. I take a little umbrage at your response, but we all have, we all get to say what we have to say, right? And you said what you wanted to say in that regard. Listening to what you said, Natalie, it appears that you did in fact find where some of those TEACs might be covered in other areas, but we'll see. I know Scott, your assertion is that these are not TEACs that are required. And we'll see to whether or not TA actually requires these. We do follow what TA requires us to do. And of course, that is in fact on the agenda tonight. That's an item that we're covering. So knowing what's required to be covered and then actually covering it is also very important. Beyond that, I have no other questions. Well, I do have one. You said you have surveyed other schools. Do you have a list of schools that require health and those that do not for local credit?
I do. I'll share too, Mr. Jackson, that I'm going to actually call the TA to see if maybe I missed something regarding the requirement of the texts. So I'll do that before Monday as well. So we got information for a number of schools. Aldine is one that has had it and is keeping health as a course. Katie also has health as a course, and based on what we learned from them, they're going to continue that as well. Spring Branch is also one that is keeping health as a course. We did note that right around us, Klein, as I think somebody shared, is not keeping health as a course. They're looking to embed the texts there. They've told us they're looking to embed the texts in other areas. Some of these schools provide the health, the health course in seventh grade, which is something you said, Mr. Hendry, some of them actually do it in seventh grade. But they're looking to see how they can provide, or where they're going to embed the texts in there. Tomball is, has removed it as a course, but they are going to continue for the cohort that has, that already has started, or already has taken health, or some have, and continue that until that cohort graduates. And again, they want to make sure that they have, they don't have a GPA disadvantage in there as well. So they're just some of the ones that we contacted. Spring Branch is, does not do it. They cover the texts through, some through PE, some once a week, some through guidance and counseling, and some through advisory. There wasn't one that we contacted that didn't say they were looking for a way to cover the texts.
Linda, a question about GPA. If everybody takes the course, does that put any student within our district at an unfair competitive advantage?
No, it does not.
Within Texas, is it on a class rank perspective, or is it on a GPA perspective?
Well, GPA, GPA and class rank is all within a school. It's not compared to another district. It's not even compared to another school. Like from someone, Sci Fair has 12 high schools, and each one of them, one of them has their class rank within that high school, not with other schools.
Well, and we actually had that conversation a number of years ago when we did away with the mastery concept. That was a pilot at Langham Creek. I know parents at other schools felt that the students at Langham Creek were given an unfair advantage by turtles being able to make grades that rabbits make. I know parents who I'd never met before from Langham would stop me routinely to say, thank you for having mastery, because their children needed just a little more time. I know all about it. My son was an undiagnosed dyslexic. He can do the work, but it typically took him about twice as long as anybody else. He was a first-class turtle then, and still is a pretty first-class turtle. So for the GPA, it is always a concern for a parent, but I don't know that it necessarily measures up from a college admission perspective. If we talk about the military, is that a concern for the military?
The GPA?
Right. Or does the military have their own tests that they administer?
Military has their own tests that they administer, the ASVAP test.
You know, something I brought up my rookie year as a trustee, and I've always wondered about it. One of our neighboring districts actually gives K-level credit for fourth-year participation in band and orchestra, but also in JROTC and also in athletics. And I know that we parents at that time felt that gave Klein students an unfair advantage over our students here in Sci Fair because they could have higher grade, grade point averages if their students were in those four-year programs. But also know that I chatted with admin about it, and admin told me it wasn't an issue, but I was never convinced that it wasn't an issue. I think my view now is entirely different than it was at that time. The, I do like your point, Natalie, about having additional classes that could be innovative. I think that that is something that we need to have an eye for going forth. I don't know if it's a single semester or a full year. I've brought up before numerous times that when I was a junior in high school, my school board decided that technology was the wave of the future, and many people grumbled and moaned, and they said, jobs that are available today will not be available in the future. And so they required us all to take a course in programming. Now, it was very rudimentary, but by the time I made it to college, it stuck with me that this was in fact important, and I learned multiple languages. I probably should have picked up Spanish or French, but instead I probably learned five different programming languages. But it was because of what the school board did when I was in high school. So I do see that as very legitimate, trying to see where should we be going. But of course, the challenge is, who do we find to teach those courses? As long as we're on that point, I am proud to say that we finally brought robotics back. You brought up innovation. My son, and he graduated in 2000, when he was in middle school, took robotics and coding in middle school. And as part of the cutback, those courses all went away. And finally, we've been able to add those back. I heard, Natalie, you have a follow-up question, and then Julie, you mentioned you have one. So Natalie, you're first.
Thank you, Tom. Wow, the mastery issue at Langham was before my time as a Langham parent or on this board, and I would definitely like to have that conversation. I think that is an incredible direction for kids in our schools, and so I'd love to hear more about what we did, how it, why it didn't proceed, and how that conversation could be continued, because I do think the GPA game and all the ways we learn for the moment, and especially given after the losses after COVID and all the digital learning, a lot of the research is showing that kids aren't retaining the learning done in that way. And so I think the mastery concept is amazing. Linda, my question is, there's, I think there's three distinctions in a class, not two. So we have keep as a course. So for example, Aldine and Katie and Spring Branch ISD, they're not requiring it. I know as a fact, because I was there as a high school principal when we made that decision. So you're saying to have it as a course offering versus when you said Tomball removed as a course? Because to me, there's another option, which is just that it is a course offered, maybe one even a lot of kids take, because it's got incredible value in their physical, mental, and social health. But right now, as it exists in Sci Fair, it is a required course. Is that correct for every freshman?
That is correct, Dr. Blasen game. And so some of these, as I said, districts have kept the course, some of them have removed the course, some of them have made the course an elective.
How many of them have it as a required course for all freshmen in the district? Do you know that?
As a graduation requirement for all?
Between Katie, Aldine, Spring Branch?
Katie, we asked if it's required for graduation, and the answer was yes.
So that may be the only one that has it a graduation requirement? I mean, there may be others of the ones we asked.
Yes, yes.
So that's what I guess my-
So Katie, Katie shared that yes, it is a graduation requirement. Some of them shared that they have it as an elective. That really, I guess, I guess my question would be if it's an elective, that's a choice, right? Kids get to choose if they take that or not. But if the texts are required, they're going to be embedded somewhere else. So they're going to get it in their elective, and they're going to get it somewhere else.
Yeah, so I guess that's my, where I, why I ask the question is because if we have content, I want us to be the best choice for every parent, and especially in an increasing environment of choice. I want 100% of Sci Fair kids that live in our district come to our schools because we're the best option. So if it's a required course with content parents are not settled with, or they don't want their kid to have to be required to take or have exposure to, that is why I asked the question, because the course, like I just said, my own daughter had incredible value for my child. And I made that, but it wasn't a choice. But if I now have content that I'm not comfortable with, that's the rub for me, is this place where it's an absolute requirement, and I don't know that, you know, that's not really the way I know it is in Spring Branch as an example that you gave. So that's why I asked the question. And just on a side note, this whole idea of a fourth-year K-level athletics option or band option, I think that's really cool. I'd really like us to have that discussion as a presentation, really in our GPA, how we do that, what we've done different over the last, anything we've changed, any mastery, anything we've tried to see how we could really look at the graduation, especially since we'll hear about a portrait of a graduate, and really finding how do we use innovative courses, and how do we use our course schedule, our course plan, our graduation plan to develop the kind of graduates we're looking after in innovative ways? So I really appreciate. I look for that information on Monday about those TEACs, because I think a lot of this hinges on, are those TEACs really required and where? And then that would be, you know, that's some information I definitely want to have.
So Dr. Blasen game, the districts that we found that are keeping it as a requirement are Aldine, Spring, Katie, and Houston ISD. And I was looking to see where the TEACs were, and Mr. Hendry, I'm not sure if you mentioned, but it's in chapter 115. And then the other thing is, it just hit me, is that the state board adopts, when they adopt textbooks, it's for TEACs required courses. And so they adopted a textbook for health, as you know. So just a couple of comments about that.
Julie, you're next.
I actually didn't have a question, but since now I've been given the opportunity to talk, just to follow up on your comments, Natalie, we will continue the conversation about how we calculate GPA. We've had some preliminary conversations about changing the way we calculate GPAs. And we'll continue those conversations. The, they, those, it requires a lot of thoughtful consideration, as well as, you can't start anything right away with a group of kids. You can't say, starting now, we're going to change our GPA process. You have to, because those GPAs start to be calculated as seventh and eighth graders. And so as we continue those conversations with how we calculate GPA moving forward, we just need to be very thoughtful and considerate about how we do that. And I look forward to continue those conversations with Dr. Macias.
Scott.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Linda, for verifying the information. Chapter 115, which is, again, I confirm with three different state Board of Education members, you can call the TA as well, that is not a requirement for teaching any kids in the school district. So again, I just want to make sure we have clarification, so we know going into it, we have good information, because if we're, have to do something, we need to do that, especially since we're certifying that later.
I will make the call to verify.
Yep, just get that clarified, because again, I did call on that to verify that. Because if you look at subsection 115.38, letter A, and I have a printout here if you'd like to look at it, it does say it's recommended, not required. And again, it's, the idea here is not to get rid of health, it's just to give students more options and credits for other things. I looked up earlier, there's a bunch of AP courses that kids can take now that are half-credit courses. That would be a great option for a lot of kids. Again, not mitigating or saying anything bad about health, I think it's a great course, but just giving kids flexibility and options for parents out there. So thank you for looking it up, Linda. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom.
Any other comments, questions to my left?
Yeah, I just have one.
Lucas.
And addressing your comment earlier, I think the question is related to exactly what we're discussing just now, which I heard at the beginning of the conversation, that Linda was going to follow up and determine whether or not text was a requirement. So I'm also looking up, I went to the website, and as you said, Scott, in reading from a general requirement, students shall be awarded one-half credit for a successful completion of the course. This course is recommended for students in grades nine through 12. It says this course. So I have a remaining question that I'm looking for Dr. Macias to answer, whether or not the texts are required.
Mr. Hendry.
Thank you, Mr. President and trustees, and I hear all the conversation, required, recommended. I get that. We should know whether it's required or recommended. But are they the kinds of things that every young person should know entering adulthood? Mental health, nutrition and fitness, dating and healthy relationships, tobacco, alcohol, vaping, drug prevention, first aid, and CPR? The exact things that are being taught that most of our kids that have trouble fall into? And we're not going to be part of the solution? We're just going to say, go take a financial literacy course, or take some AP course? These need to be taught, because we can't guarantee in every home that these are addressed. And yes, there's ways to opt out of some of these, but these are fundamental to good, young citizens. Though, I mean, it doesn't matter if you have financial literacy, if you're on drugs or you're obese, and you've never, you've never talked about it or studied that. So I am totally on board that we ought to keep the curriculum, whether it's required or recommended. Thank you. you.
3C. The administration will provide an oral report on the work of the Portrait of a CFISD Graduate Advisory Council. The presenters are Roy Garcia and Dr. Glenda Horner. We have two speakers on this agenda item this evening. Our first speaker is Deborah Edwards.
To the Board of Trustees, I am Deborah Edwards, and I was a member of the Portrait of a Cyfair Graduate Advisory Committee. I was the only person in my feeder pattern who voted against the proposed changes. I do not believe that the Portrait of a Cyfair Graduate needs to be changed in any way. The original document addressed a skill set that will never change: listening, speaking, writing, reading, mathematics, and technology. The proposed document does not address education at all. The proposed draft, based in part from information obtained from Sonoma County, California, and Fairfax, Virginia, portraits of graduates, require a student to have such traits as curiosity, integrity, resilience, empathy, and communication. Nothing was mentioned to the committee that included the ability to read, write, and reason. Cyfair ISD's job is to educate students, not to teach them how to feel. The only thing about the original document that stayed the same was its name in the proposed draft, was its name: Portrait of a Cyfair Graduate. One of my favorite scriptures is Matthew 18 and 6, and it says, "But if anyone causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him to have a large millstone hung around his neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea." Now, since I got 28 seconds left before I take my seat and say good evening, I just want to say one thing. I have always been psycho Cyfair. I have grown children who came up under the Portrait of a Cyfair Graduate, who know how to read, write, and reason. And I want that for every child, no matter what economic background, whether they're blue, green, gay, straight, or upside down. They need to know how to read. Thank you all.
Our next speaker is George Edwards.
To the Board of Trustees, Superintendent, District Staff, my name is George Edwards, Jr., and I was Chair of the Cyfair ISD Diversity Committee, that was commissioned by the Board of Trustees in the early 90s to deal with diversity and standards for students' performance. The original portrait of a Cyfair ISD graduate came from the Diversity Committee. Importantly, the original portrait of the Cyfair ISD graduate was homegrown. It was created and put together by Cyfair ISD residents. The portrait outlined the academic and citizenship characteristics we want all of our Cyfair ISD students to possess upon graduating from Cyfair ISD. The portrait was approved by the Board of Trustees. The currency of the 21st century is knowledge. The portrait was designed to be an evergreen document, and if you compare the characteristics shown in the Futures of Jobs Report, showing the top 10 skills for 2025, to the characteristics contained within the original portrait of the Cyfair ISD graduate, you will see that they closely match. In closing, I would encourage the Board to maintain the original portrait as it truly represents the characteristics that Cyfair ISD graduates need to be responsible and productive citizens of society. Thank you.
We now have a presentation from Roy Garcia and Dr. Glenda Horner.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Just quickly, I wanted to share, and then Dr. Glenda Horner will begin the presentation. We've got several members of our committee that will present the work that started back in mid-March, and just want to give you an opportunity to take a dive into what we did do and everything associated with that, and then finally come to the recommendation and our proposal in moving forward with the Portrait of a Cyfair Graduate. So with that said, Dr. Horner.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, President Jackson, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. This evening, we will provide you with a report on the work of the Portrait of a CFISD Graduate Advisory Council. As you may recall, a district-wide survey was conducted last spring and sought feedback from a randomized sample of parents, community members, and staff. Basilees and associates worked with our Technology Department to distribute the survey in batches by zip code to parents, community members, and staff. Not only did Basilees want to ensure a geographic representation of the district, but also a demographic representation, including representation by ethnicity, economically disadvantaged, and at-risk indicators. Based on results from the survey, two ad hoc committees were formed: Portrait of a CFISD Graduate and Opportunity for All. Both committees launched this spring. This evening, we'll focus on the work of a Portrait of a CFISD Graduate Advisory Council. The charge of the council is twofold: First, to review the Portrait of a CFISD Graduate and determine if modifications are warranted; and secondly, to develop a marketing rebranding plan for the Portrait of a CFISD Graduate. Mr. Roy Garcia and I serve as facilitators for the group. The membership structure includes trustees. As facilitators, we collaborate and consult with the Advisory Council coordinators to include Dr. Lynda Macias and Mrs. Debbie Blackshire, as we plan each meeting. Trustees, Dr. Blasingame and Mr. Scott Henry, attend, observe, and participate in the meetings. The council membership includes representatives from the 12 high school feeder patterns, accounting for 83% of the council's makeup. Additionally, 17% of the council comprises key central office department representatives. Those who desired to serve on this particular council or committee completed a brief application that was available on the district's website. Applications were posted in early October and closed in early March. Applicants indicated which of the stakeholder groups they represented. These stakeholder groups include representatives from our 12 high school feeder patterns and central office representatives. The selection process included the following considerations. First, we began by reviewing all submitted applications. We noted duplications across committees, as some applicants also applied to serve on the Committee for Opportunity for All. We wanted to make certain that we were formed as those committees were forming at the same time. Thirdly, as we began to determine membership, we created a high school feeder pattern table to ensure that all 12 high school feeder patterns were represented and all stakeholder groups were at the table. Next, we noted single applicants in a category and included them automatically. Next, we noted two or more in a category. Then, we looked for diversity of experiences and reasons for applying to make the final determinations. And finally, if there were no applicants in a particular category, we reached out directly to our high school principals, and middle and elementary principals as well, and colleagues to encourage applicants to apply, because we wanted to make sure that all feeder patterns were equally represented. If you serve on the council, would you please stand and be recognized? We realize that time is a precious commodity, and we are grateful that you have chosen to invest in this work. Thank you. With the backdrop that launched the work of the group in mind, local business owner, parent, and Advisory Council member, Mr. Sean Kureschi, will share with you what was accomplished in the Advisory Council's first meeting.
Thank you, Glenda. Our full Advisory Council convened on March 21st for the initial kickoff meeting. As a first step in coming together as a group, we adopted five community agreements that guide our work and best ensured that all voices were heard throughout the process. Members agreed that we represent others in our work, consider our stakeholders, and not solely our own interests. Every voice is important. Listen respectfully, even if you disagree with the idea. We can say whatever we need to say, but we should do so with kindness. We should seek first to understand, and then to be understood. And finally, our goal is to build consensus. In other words, we must strive to achieve a mutually acceptable level of agreement necessary to move ideas forward. At the March 21st meeting, we examined three key pieces of information: the Futures of Job Report, feedback from the CFISD Stakeholder Survey conducted last spring, and the current portrait of a CFISD graduate. We first reviewed the Future of Jobs Report. The World Economics Future of Jobs Report seeks to understand the current and future impact of key disruptions of employment levels, skill sets, and recruitment patterns in different industries and countries. It does so by asking the chief human resources officers of today's largest employers to imagine how jobs in their industry will change over the course of the next five years. Specifically, what do these individuals perceive to be the soft skills needed to enhance interactions, career prospects, and job performance? The report is published every five years. The skills in these time segments represent the reports published in 2010, 2015, and 2020. We discussed the skills trending up, down, and emerging. We noted that, according to the report, the projection for 2025 is that skills demanded in the workforce will grow increasingly more complex. For the first time, complex problem solving fell from the number-one spot, while resilience, stress tolerance, and flexibility emerged. Interestingly, the latest report was published in October 2020, several months into the pandemic. We began to imagine how even more complex skills might become as we look towards 2030. The second key piece of information the group considered included results from the 2022 Spring Survey. Respondents were asked several questions about the current portrait of a CFISD graduate. The first question we looked at allowed the respondents to provide an open-ended response to the characteristics that they felt best described, a successful student who graduates from one of our high schools. And we also looked at a question that asked respondents to rank the five portrait characteristics. Here's a representation of the data collected from the question. Blue represents most important, and gold represents next most important. Parents ranked competent problem solver as the most important, while community and staff ranked responsible citizen as most important. Both groups indicated effective communicator was the third most important characteristic. Finally, self-directed learner and quality producer ranked fourth and fifth, respectively, amongst the five traits. The final key piece of information we examined was the current portrait of a CFISD graduate. We were provided a brief history of the current portrait. We learned that the original portrait was created in the 1990s by a committee of dedicated individuals like ourselves. The original document features five traits, or soft skills. Initially, the document was widely utilized in the classrooms and with students. However, and to no fault of any individual, the focus of the portrait faded over time. Table groups noted that which traits that they believed remained relevant, and those that no longer seemed as relevant. As you might anticipate naturally, the group began to see connections between the key pieces of information. As we moved toward closing out our first meeting, we documented feedback in a chalk-talk activity that would be used to help inform the next steps in our process. The chalk-talk allowed all voices to be heard as a process to pose questions to individuals for written responses. Because it was done in complete silence, it encouraged thoughtful contemplation. Ultimately, the group came to a consensus and determined that modifications to the current portrait are warranted. As a final action, a writing team was formed to begin to draft modifications to the current portrait. The following were selected by their respective feeder pattern or central office department to represent them on the writing team. Our committee's facilitators spoke at various stakeholder meetings after our first Advisory Council meeting. They informed each group of the Advisory Council's work, beginning with campus principals and various other district and campus administrators, followed by the District Educational Improvement Committee. The DEIC includes 93 teachers representing each campus, district-level staff, parents, businesses, and members of the community, including community leaders. The information was also shared with the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, which included student leaders from our high schools. Their final stop was speaking with the various stakeholders represented on the Community Leadership Committee. All along the way, stakeholders were asked to respond to a single prompt via Mentimeter, the question, "What is an essential soft skill or trait of a successful CFISD graduate?" This allowed respondents to reply with up to five traits. In all, over 400 voices were heard, and the information gathered helped them inform the work of our group. Next, Mrs. Meredith Akers, parent, community member, elementary campus principal, and product of Cyfair ISD, who will share with you some of the work in which the writing team engaged.
Thank you, Sean. Following our first meeting as a full Advisory Council, the writing team gathered. We centered our work around the greater group's recommendation to modify the current portrait of a CFISD graduate. We knew that we represented others in our work, so we carefully examined all of the feedback received thus far, and looked for avenues that allowed us, at the same time, to maintain the intent and spirit of the original document. We broke into smaller groups, the writing team broke into smaller groups, each group examining either the feedback and input from the chalk-talk, the stakeholder feedback from the Mentimeter survey, or exemplars from other districts. One of our smaller groups examined the feedback and input our fellow Advisory Council members offered in response to four questions posed in the chalk-talk. Because there were multiple sets of the same questions posted around the room, the feedback from each was compiled into a single document for easy viewing. One of the questions posed, what squared or agreed with something you already knew, yielded such responses as, "Resilience and stress management are essential to success," and, "We need to be speaking in modern terms that our students understand and find relevant." Another question asked, "What are you seeing from a new or different angle?" This yielded such responses as, "Hard skills are virtually useless without soft skills," and, "How much the world has changed since the original portrait was created." Another question asked, "What is still circling around in your head?" To this question, council members added responses such as, "Updating the language based on the evolving times," and, "How much harder, more complex, and more demanding it is to be successful today." And finally, to the question, "In what direction should our group go?", respondents added such things as, "Make the portrait less wordy and more inclusive," and, "Focus on developing students who can adapt and persevere." Another of our small groups reviewed the responses from the Mentimeter survey question, "What is an essential soft skill of a successful CFISD graduate?" Responses reflected over 400 stakeholders, who were each given the opportunity to share up to five traits. Their responses were fed into an Excel spreadsheet and synthesized into a Word cloud formation. A Word cloud, also known as a tag cloud, is a visual representation of words. Cloud creators are used to highlight popular words and phrases based on their frequency and relevance. The Word cloud provided another of our small groups with quick and simple visual insights that led to more in-depth analyses. Using the generated Excel spreadsheet allowed for deeper analysis. The smaller group reviewed and combined the data into one column that listed a number next to each characteristic. Then, the list was sorted alphabetically, and some words were renamed to common word stems. For example, words such as communication, communicator, effective communicator, and effective communication were all renamed as communication. Next, the group created a pivot table. A pivot table is a powerful tool to calculate, summarize, and analyze data that lets you see comparisons, patterns, and trends in your data. From the generated list, we could easily see that survey responders were, at minimum, twice as likely to indicate communication as a necessary soft skill. The third small group examined portraits of a graduate from across the country. Through our exploration, we gathered potential marketing ideas and ways in which other districts incorporate their portraits of a graduate into classrooms, across the districts, and even into the greater community. We were drawn to the simple, innovative- We were drawn to the simple, innovative, eye-catching designs, the intentional use of the pronoun "you" and "yourself" in several of them, and a focus on student-friendly language in the description of identified traits. Our smaller groups then came back together as a full writing committee to debrief our findings. As our evening approached a close, we compiled a list of traits that we discovered within the shared findings. Then, we were given five sticky dots each to use as our votes for the traits that resonated and reverberated within the feedback from stakeholders. We were reminded that we voted, the way we voted was to reflect the greater groups we represented and not solely our own interests and our own experiences. Our votes revealed the traits that would serve as the basis for a modified version of the district's portrait of a CFISD graduate. The top traits included curiosity, integrity, resilience, empathy, and communication. Next, Jonathan Gutierrez, who is a community member, a product of CFISD, and serves as a high school assistant principal, will share how the writing team proceeded from here.
Thank you, Meredith. Our writing team returned a week later and picked up where we left off. We brainstormed and envisioned what our end product might look like and sound like. In our conversations organically, we developed our own original structure that would help us stay on course and best ensure that a common thread would connect each trait. The written structure that our writing team designed includes a hook or attention grabber, a sentence describing the trait with the student cast as the hero, and a brief final sentence meant as a launch or call to action. Again, we knew that we represented others in our work, so we framed our ideas around the feedback received thus far and looked for avenues that allowed us, at the same time, to maintain the intent and spirit of the original document. Using the agreed-upon structure, we broke into small groups and divided the five traits among ourselves to begin drafting descriptions. After each small group completed a draft of their assigned trait, we came back together, shared what we created, and continued revising each description, always ensuring that the descriptors carefully followed the agreed-upon structure, uh, structure we designed for the purpose. As we closed our meeting, we made initial plans for sharing these drafts with the full advisory council. A week later, on April 17th, we came together with the full advisory council for the purpose of gathering feedback around the modified portrait of a CFISD graduate that the writing team had drafted. The larger group followed what we called a feedback carousel. Several copies of each of the five traits and their descriptors were posted around the room. Council members moved at their own pace and provided specific written feedback on flipchart paper posted beneath each trait. The next evening, the writing team gathered again. The feedback gathered the evening before was then compiled so that our writing team could discuss and revise the statements. As a team, we carefully reviewed the feedback. While we appreciated the many accolades and positive comments that our fellow advisory council members provided, we narrowed our focus to constructive feedback because we wanted to improve our draft. Before tonight's presentation, we met again with the full advisory council and shared our revised descriptors. Next, Abby Gavishausen will share a recap of that meeting. She serves as a communications specialist in the communications, communications department, is a member of the CFISD community, and is a product of Cypher ISD.
Thank you, Jonathan. We gathered with the full advisory council on April 26 via Zoom. The platform allowed us to capture feedback from the group using the chat feature. The meeting was structured so that we could highlight the changes made to our first draft and show how we responded to the feedback we received. As we shared, the chat feature allowed us to gather in-the-moment feedback from our group, take a moment to review some of the feedback they offered. Excuse me. After reviewing and responding to the latest draft of the modified portrait, the advisory council reached a consensus and determined that we were ready to report the group's work thus far. And as we've recounted for you this evening, the work we engaged in has far-reaching potential to influence and shape our district. We are both humbled and honored to be part of this work. We realize that when our students succeed, we all succeed, and yet the future will ask more of them than it did of us. So, we set out to discover what soft skills and mindsets today's kids need to succeed after high school. We gathered feedback from hundreds of stakeholders and asked them which traits are most important for CFISD students. Like the original committee that gathered in the 1990s, we worked collaboratively to ensure the modified portrait will enable graduates to live meaningfully and successfully in society and the workplace. It's an essential vision of where our students are headed and how our district will follow. As we shared previously, we centered our work around the greater group's recommendation to modify the current portrait of a CFISD graduate. We know that we represented others in our work, so we carefully examined feedback received thus far and looked for avenues that allowed us, at the same time, to maintain the intent and spirit of the original document. With this in mind, let's take a look at the modified portrait of a CFISD graduate.
Curiosity. Dare to wonder. No matter your interests, explore limitless possibilities and bring them within your reach. Discover your creativity and dream big.
Integrity. Be honest and trustworthy. When faced with a tough decision, choose to be the best version of yourself at home, on the job, and out in the world. Have the courage to do what is right, even if it is not easy or popular.
Resilience. Learn and grow from challenges. Even through failures or difficult circumstances, persist and adapt to find new solutions. Choose to learn from every experience. Advisory council members saw comparisons to quality producer and competent problem solver from the original document. They also noted post-pandemic that resilience is of even greater importance.
Empathy. Think of others and how they feel. Despite our differences, seek to understand those around you and see the world through their eyes. Look for opportunities to serve and support. Advisory council members noted that empathy is something that's needed to be a responsible citizen and effective communicator. They also noted that empathy and responsible citizen are both about how to accept and deal with diversity.
Communication. Create productive dialogue. Even when stakes are high, listen for understanding while engaging in conversation, whether through writing, speaking, body language, or technology. Share your ideas with care and respect for all viewpoints. The greater group shared that this trait echoes effective communicator with the original. They pointed out that the original states who successfully uses the levels of communication skills demanded by the complex and ever-changing world. While the new version elaborates on how to communicate, by listening for understanding with care and with respect, they added that these are such important concepts for today's environment. Additionally, they also picked up on the intentional language of the new, and specifically the phrase, "Whether through writing, speaking, body language, or technology." They indicated that the barriers in communication are removed in this phrase, as not everyone has the same abilities. And for curiosity, the advisory council members noted a connection to self-directed learner and competent problem solver from the original portrait. They also noted that curiosity captures many of the more discrete attributes outlined in the original.
And then before we move on, I will share, um, from integrity, the greater group drew comparison to responsible citizen in the current portrait, indicating that the statements beautifully blended the idea of responsible citizen with our bringing out the best character traits. The potential is that this provides a real sense of continuity through the years and with those programs. Now that our group has completed the modified version of the portrait of a CFISD graduate, we are ready to begin planning and implementing a marketing and rebranding plan for the new portrait. Our goal is to be able to roll out the modified portrait of a CFISD graduate when the new school year begins. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Mr. Jackson and Board of Trustees, we're open for your comments and any questions you may have.
No doubt, I expect to have some. Let me start to my left, Lucas.
First, thank you for the team and the committee for all the time that it took to do the work, write, communicate with each other, and, uh, work through this task. I do have a question. When I look at the pivot table, I see a few items. Problem solver is listed above the term resilient, empathetic, collaborate. And yet, when we look down to the notes written in handwriting, the term problem solving is not on that list, while items that ranked beneath it were on that list. And I did hear that there, uh, the understanding from the presenters this evening is that the term curiosity and resilience seek to embed or embody that idea. So, I'd just like a little bit of clarity on what we're trying to... Clarity of intent, please.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. The, um, the particular trait that you speak of, actually, we looked at, the group looked at several pieces of feedback, so that was one of the pieces that they looked at. So, we didn't make all of our decisions based off of that one particular list, if that makes sense.
Okay, so what we are seeing in our presentation, the pivot table itself represents other pivot tables that were also gathered?
No, the pivot table represents the feedback from the Mentimeter survey.
Got it. Okay. I, um, and this is not a question, but a comment. When I'm hiring and when my colleagues are hiring, we're looking for terms called critical thinking, problem solving, those are terms that we use today to identify whether or not someone is going to be able to be effective in the marketplace. They're not using terms of curious. And, um, I understand a little, maybe not fully yet, but I understand a little of the path to get to these terms of curiosity and resilience. While those are noble terms, and I agree with them being of value, I am challenged with what I perceive as a gap of not embedding two ideas of critical thinking and problem solving, which I find, at least in my experience in the marketplace, to be some of them were really what separates high-performing stakeholders from lower-performing stakeholders, and the ability to be self-starters and get something done. So, I think I need to understand the path a little bit better, and so I expect through the rest of the conversations that we'll have with colleagues that, uh, I'll have some additional clarity. So, I'll hold any other questions or comments for now.
Thank you.
Debbie.
Well, as a co-coordinator, I really don't have any questions, but I do want to publicly thank the advisory council for all their work that they did. I will tell you that being in, uh, that room of people, first, the advisory council as a whole, uh, when they are looking at this and dreaming and, uh, looking at all the data presented, the, um, the, I don't want to say, the electricity, I think is a word, in the room was just tremendous. And then, I attended several of the co-committee meetings with the writing team, and at the first meeting, I just looked at them and I said, "Their work had been powerful that night, and, uh, there was a lot of thought that went into this." And, uh, I, you know, I feel that a lot of this goes, uh, respects the work done originally by our Portrait of a Graduate Committee, and I applaud Mr. Edwards, uh, for his hard work. But, uh, you know, it's been a, it was the 1990s when we did the original one, and students today are different than students back then, and that what is most important is for us to be relevant to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie.
Um, I absolutely want to thank the, uh, members of the advisory council that worked so hard to, um, to combine your different perspectives and ideas and thoughts and, and, and even more importantly, to represent others. You all were not representing just yourselves, you were representing, um, your communities. And, you know, while, um, sometimes the output, uh, we as individuals may not feel a connection to it because we weren't part of the process, we trust the process. We trust that you all worked so hard and you represented your communities well and with integrity. Um, and I, I, not only am I grateful for your work, but I, I, um, I trust you and I trust the work that you did. I'm excited for, um, uh, a new portrait of the, of a graduate that respects the, our legacy and our foundation, where we've come from, but also focuses on, on where our students are going in the future. Um, and I'm so thrilled to see that, I mean, that students were part of the process. I mean, what better input to have than from students because they, and from recent graduates, right? That know, you know, what is expected of them in the workforce. And truly, our goal is to prepare our students for the future. So, anything we can do, whether it's, we feel it's 100% perfect, or if it's not the way I would have said it, but it's the way you said it. And that's, that's where the value is. Um, and anything like this that we can use to help give our students some guidance on, um, what, uh, the kind of people that we want them to be as parents and as teachers. So, I'm just, uh, I'm just very grateful for all this work, and I'm so impressed that you did so much in such a short period of time. Thank you.
Let me turn to my right, Scott.
I won't belabor what Julie just said, but I am very thankful for the effort put into it. Uh, I mean, I was part of the email strains, uh, got spammed all the time because of all the means we had and y'all had, so I'm very appreciative of the time and effort and the hard work that was put into it because I know a lot of hours were dedicated to this and people's personal time outside of that, so I'm very thankful for that. I know everything from my part because I was part of that committee, so I won't ask you more questions, but thank you.
Natalie.
Uh, it was, uh, being an observer of the process, I did appreciate meeting new people and just such a high-quality, caring group of, uh, committee members, uh, from across the district, seeing people sitting in feeder patterns, meeting each other as well. Um, it was a pleasure to be a part of that. Um, as I look at the product, I do, uh, I get excited about, um, I'm always excited about our kids and how we prepare them. Uh, but I also, uh, reading it with a lens after our speaker spoke, I really was struck by, um, the thought about reading and math and where it sits, and if we have a one job as a school system, the one job is to make sure kids can read and do math. And so, I was kind of reading the language, and I realized as I looked at the one about communication, I kept hoping it would show up in one of them as we went across the different traits. And so, I was thinking, oh, maybe communication is where that reading piece would be, and kind of wondering about the math piece. And I didn't see maybe it's as strong there as I would hope. Um, then I got, went back to, we have the dot, the data we, um, gather up every year as we have set our goals and we do our superintendent evaluation. And really, when I look at academic achievement, you know, uh, we had some celebration in meeting our target and the overall number of kiddos who are approaching Meets and Masters on STAR, but we're still in progress at target objective four. Achieve or exceed primary grades K through two, reading and math grade level targets, meaning the campuses that have at least 80% of their students meeting those targets was still in progress. We still were in progress with campuses having 90% of their students achieve, exceed, or make progress toward the expected reading level. We're talking K235. And we're still in progress, um, in the graduation rate, and we're still in progress in advanced course participation for our economically disadvantaged group of students. And so, to me, I do, I am afraid that we could be shooting after these characteristics, which are absolutely what I want for my own child, and then still not have it be super clear that we are educating the children in reading and math as well, and that is part of our responsibility. If we're saying the portrait is our promise to you... the portrait is our promise to you as a student in our district, no matter what, if you're an economically disadvantaged kid, if you're Latino, if you're a black, if you're a white, Hispanic, Asian, mixed race, doesn't matter. Our promise to you is that there's something we're handing you to leave out of this place. And if we do not promise you that you've got the foundations of reading and math, I am concerned that may be a little bit of a miss. So maybe that's some language that could be addressed in there.
Dr. Blasingame, as one of the coordinators for this committee, I too question and was looking for, where is the content for, in this portrait? But as the committee worked, it's embedded throughout all of these pieces together is the expectation that we're going to develop those students who are reading on level, those competent problem solvers, those critical thinkers, all together pieced, all of it pieced together. Because I too was looking at that as well. And then the other thing is that all of these characteristics that our students internalize that, because that's how they're going to make sure that they see themselves. I think, Mr. Scanlon, you've talked many times about kids believing in themselves and kids being able to articulate that. All of these together, those expectations for our kids to understand so that they are able to articulate that and truly know that they can become the readers and the mathematicians that is expected here in Cyfer ISD.
I appreciate the comments. I do appreciate your comments. I do wonder about the measurability then as well. So if we took these characteristics and had metrics associated with them that let us know that indeed we're achieving the Portrait of a Graduate, that may be a way then for those to be kind of, because that is our job as the board. We're supposed to get the community's values and what they want for their graduates. And then we're supposed to put that into a way that we hold ourselves accountable for doing it, us, board members accountable for doing it. And so I do, I don't know, how do we use this? You know, I know we haven't, we talked about the marketing plan, but then how do we put legs and feet on this? How do we measure our success for it? How do you hold us accountable, voters, to say, you didn't do it, go, you know, or, okay, thank you, stick around a longer to help our kids be the best graduates they can be for the marketplace and for the life, for their families, for being good, you know, good citizens and all the things that we're talking about. So maybe there's another whole piece to this work that would actually give it that kind of, and kind of like this, right? I mean, we are, this is a robust document we created to hold the administration accountable, hold us accountable in the same way.
Do you think the measurement is the graduation rate, Dr. Blasingame, for, as a portrait of a graduate? Do you think the measurement is the, are students graduating and the expectation, the targets that we, that we set for graduates?
You asked the wrong girl. Because, you know, I love data and school data and all the ways we measure kids. So I don't think I can answer that so flippantly. Absolutely, we don't graduate them. But you know what? Graduation no longer is our actual goal. And you can see some of the choice movement, what happened, why it even came on to challenge traditional school districts, was because they promised something beyond graduation. They started talking about to and through college. We in Spring Branch ISD said T24. We no longer measured ourselves just at graduation rate. We said, how many would get a technical, a two-year or a four-year degree? So I think there's other measures. We've talked about clearinghouse data. I think someone brought it your, she was right on there with her clearinghouse data, looking how many actually get through. Not that I think that's the only measure, but that is a measure. So I think that'd be a great conversation to have, probably longer than we can do at the dais tonight. But I think we're doing an amazing job. I mean, I'm a parent too. I've got a very well-educated kid who's going to be prepared for and has those traits. And I look, question that reading it too, like, one of the things we haven't have not done well between the partnership, me the parent first, and then us as a school district. And so I'm not suggesting it's because we're not doing well. I just think that I would make sure that the main thing is also measuring the main thing. Does that make sense? But it's much more than just the main thing. And for a student who reading's not a struggle for, that would be too low of a standard, you know, to say. But if a kid like Tom mentioned, his kiddo with dyslexia, that was still, then we owed that to him as well to make sure that was something that got fluid. So I do think, I think graduation rate is part of it. And I think we're in the right direction because we're discussing this. And to me, what I'd like to say is that what I celebrate most is that we're once again talking about the kids, whole kids, characteristics about kids. I've been, like many up here, I've been a part of the accountability movement from when I entered my classroom in 1992 as a bilingual teacher, was just the birth of when we started to do testing and high-stakes accountability. And I think most of us, well, as educators, would say, we lost our soul a little bit in the middle. We had to go after things. We have a district a few miles down 290 that's going to be taken over because it didn't meet STAR scores for a campus or a couple of campuses. And so we can't ignore that. But we also are, once again, focusing on what is the product, what are the kids, the human beings, the well-rounded individuals we're going to produce. So I celebrate our work here. I celebrate our work here. I just think it's going to have other pieces that join to it. And if we make this the promise to every kid, then none of the other things matter. It doesn't matter red or yellow, black or white. All of us left here with something amazing. We left here with a promise to you that you're ready for the world in this way. So. That wasn't a question. Do I make it one? Are we, can we do the work? And my answer is yes. I think we can. We're an amazing group, ready to do great work.
Already done?
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Lucas.
So I'm going through an exercise as we've been speaking, looking at the terms of critical thinking and problem solving. And so just taking up problem solving and trying to map these ideas of resilience, curiosity, communication, empathy. I can get on board, and it's not that anybody's seeking my personal opinion. I'm just trying to wrap my brains around, how would I think about this as an employer? Clearly, when someone's a good problem solver, they have to have resiliency within themselves to be able to go after a problem and courage to find a different solution. So I understand. Curiosity, they've got to be willing to explore ideas from different lenses, to be able to seek, to understand. Clearly, they have to be able to communicate, to collaborate. Part of the collaboration is going to have empathy. I have a personal preference that I wish that I saw more of the problem solving in it because I'm having to dig really hard to get there. And it's, I feel like it's something that I'm going to need to explain a lot to parents in the marketplace, over and over and over and over. But I do see elements of it throughout the document. Regarding critical thinking, so again, resiliency, to be able to believe in oneself, to be able to unpack an idea and to explore it, as well as the ability to have curiosity so you can see through different lenses. But when I look at this, I, and perhaps this is my, you know, and looking to my colleagues a little bit, maybe for some clarification. So when I read this, it really, it sits with me as a vision statement, which can have things like OKRs behind it, which would be more measurable. So we have our, how we perform as a district, graduation rate, et cetera. I'm trying to, I'm trying to find a way to translate this into more real-world application. I find these values and these traits valuable, and that these would be embedded in what we would want our graduates to have. I just, I'm not seeing as concrete an idea as I would wish I could see, but if I dig for it, I can get there, kind of. And I'm feeling better about it as I talk through it. I just wish I read it a little bit more clearly. So, and all that being said, you know, to Ms. Heinemann's point regarding the process, I get the process, I'm having to look over the monitor to see you guys. I understand the process. I understand that your faces represent lots of other faces that were involved in this process. And it's, that it was hard and it took a lot of time and disseminates ideas through lots of different folks, lots of different lenses. I get all that and I appreciate all that. I think these are important components to have. I just wish I saw a little bit stronger language around those two different ideas. In my area, I see analytics, I see hard sciences, I see incredible amounts of things that we've never been asked to do. And as I've interviewed kids for college over the last 10 years, as I've interviewed kids for Harvard, and the resumes that I've seen, and as I've interviewed kids that have gone to trade school, and the expertise that they have, and the knowledge and the skill and the way that they have to pick information up, it is faster than what I had to do as a kid. That is for certain. And it's going to continue to accelerate over time because our children are just exposed to more and more and more. I don't think I have any further comments or questions, but I do deeply appreciate this team.
Debbie, did you have comments?
I did. Dr. Blasingame, in all due respect, I do not believe that everything necessarily has to have a metric to it. The fact that our graduation rate in Cyfer ISD is higher than, I believe, most districts within the state, if not all of them, speaks clearly of how we're doing. We all know there is room for improvement. And on the eight years I've been on this school board, I have seen us working hard and seeing our numbers go up. Now that said, the pandemic was a totally different situation. And to me, that we have to kind of set to the side and take that into an account. But you know what? Where we're really going to measure this, I believe, and I don't believe we're necessarily going to see it when they walk across that stage, it's going to be in the years to come, as they do enter the workforce, as they do become involved in their communities, as they do become responsible citizens. And then how do we measure that? I mean, for those, we had a, I was impressed with the number, both the parents and school district personnel that served on the committee, were students of Cyfer ISD and had gone all the way through. And some of them that were somewhat younger didn't even know a portrait of a graduate existed. And that's why I think part of the concept of marketing it and maybe breaking it down, even so that we have one for elementary-age student or middle school student. But we, that all lead up to that portrait of a graduate. But this group was not only concerned with the students that would be graduating, would be going on to college, but with those going to trade schools. And even Ms. Akers brought up, and I never even thought about that, but her concern was for her special ed students. You know, how was that going to look? And how were we going to relate that to them so that they understood as well? And metrics, while metrics are important, I'm not sure that this is something that, other than the graduation rate, that can be measured for 10 years out when we see what they're doing with their lives. Because I can tell you that, you know, just looking at my own sons and how they came out of school and how one of them is a president of a business and, you know, serves on different committees and is real involved in his church and his community. I know we can measure him, but, you know, it takes a while because they become business people, they become young parents. And I think to your, to your point, Lucas, as being a retired business person, yes, you do look for those traits in a person. And sometimes, though, those traits are not there when they're young. They develop them as they go through. You see changes as they go through college, and then you see changes again as they become married and a parent. And it's an evolving situation. So.
Glenda, are you getting tired of standing up there? So tell you what, I have a few comments, but go ahead and sit down. It's okay.
I didn't want to be disrespectful.
And I appreciate that. You know, I often wonder if we shouldn't have something like a bench up there for people to sit on. I do want to say that I resent if any of my colleagues call and answer from any of the people that serve as being flip or flippant. I don't think anybody gives us a flip or flippant answer. And quite frankly, I resent that. That's a mark of how HISD boards have operated over the past 15 years. It is not a trait that I admire. It is not a trait that we should have. I know we are a very young board. We're the youngest board that's been for Cyfer for probably 20 years. We all have growth. I'm most of anybody. But we need to be careful. We need to be careful. On the topic, first, let me say to everybody, thank you for contributing your time. Your work was a lot more fun. The committee I was on, I was privileged to tell the district how to cut 20% of the cost. I was privileged to recommend to the board positions to be cut, stipends to be cut. That was no fun at all. What you're doing is much more meaningful than what I engaged in. But I do understand the process. I understand the time commitment as well. Lucas, I heard you loud and strong. I want to hold on to the past. I want to hold on to what made me successful. You know, content mastery, high processing. But the more I talk to executives who are much younger than I, those are not the skills that are valued, which personally kind of hurts my soul. It's sort of like, if I had to start all over again, would I find a place in this world? I don't know. I'm not comfortable because I want to hold on to the past with the new words that are being used. It will take some getting used to. For the viewing audience, every trustee sat on a committee except for myself. I was not on any committee. And in fact, I was warned by general counsel, I could not even go to the committees to observe, even if I said nothing, because that would be a violation. So I approached this evening with some degree of anxiety. I do trust the process, having been part of the process before. I know the process works. I remain discomfited by the words because they are not words of my generation. I was late born. My dad came ashore on D-Day. They were not words of his generation, let me tell you. None of them. But as I read the Wall Street Journal, these are the words that show up in the Wall Street Journal, day after day after day. I would like some of the older words to somehow find their way back into this document. I think there's value. I do agree that what our students do after they graduate is of import. I can't believe that content mastery is not as important as it, as it used to be. But Lucas, you pointed out about ChatGPT. I've talked to university professors about it. It's not going away. The question is, how do you use it? And all of a sudden, it means content mastery is not as significant as it used to be. Content utilization. But that gets me back to some of the old words, like problem solving. But I do trust the process, even though I lack comfort level in hearing the words. I know good people were on this. Some I know, some I've never met. But I do trust them. And I look forward as to... And I look forward as to, as this progresses and has its rolled out. It is important. I appreciate spending the time. I'll open it up to further comments because I'm sure folks have other comments. Yes, sir. Last time I called you mister, the first time I called you DDD, this time I'll call you.
Call me whatever you want to.
So this time I'll call you Mark.
Just in case people don't understand, coming out of the 2122 school year, Austin ISD was a B, Northside ISD was a B, Plano was rated a B, Spring Branch was rated a B, Klein was rated a B, HISD was rated a B. There were two large schools in the state of Texas with an A rating, KD ISD and Cyfair ISD. So if you listen to some of these comments this evening, you would think we would be found lacking. That's just not true. We're a high performing district, so I want to make sure people know that.
Well, and Mark, that's a valid point of the 25 largest school districts. Cyfair was ranked third among the 25 largest. I know that as a board member, but also as a citizen, I thrilled when Spring Branch had their bold initiative. And they talked about how they were going to increase the impact of their graduates after graduation. But also know after a few years, they came back and said, they failed. That that approach was not effective. Which I didn't want to hear because I liked their concepts, I liked their words. But words and concepts have meaning and we have to understand how we use those. And Mark, it is a good point. We are a high achieving district. We should not treat this district as if it is a failing district, that it's an HISD district or some district that the TEA is ready to move a conservator in, in for. Because that's not who we are. And I'm sure we will continue to have these, these conversations and discussions. But the, I've always said, and our current commissioner agrees with me, but so does the prior commissioner, we have to look both internally as well as external. Those external comparisons make the internal comparisons, they lend validation to them. And so by all external comparisons, we are doing an exceptionally fine job in this district. The internal comparisons say, let's do better. But compared across the state, compared against our demographics, there is no district with our demographics that comes close to what we are doing in any category. Doesn't mean that we don't have improvement. The improvement is not measured by quarterly assessments, but in longitudinal growth. And that longitudinal growth is in fact there.
Mr. Jackson.
Julie.
Thank you. I just, I've been, I appreciate the good conversations. And I've just a couple of thoughts that have come to my mind in regards to metrics and measurements. We have a very robust board monitoring system that, that I think provides, meets that need for those metrics and those key measurements. And looking at these, the portrait of a CFISD graduate as it's proposed, it just made me think, who is the target audience of this? Who is this, who is this designed for? And I, and I know in the past, when the original work was done, they were, it was put on posters. It was in the hallways, it was in classrooms, and students saw it and teachers could reference it. And so I'm sitting here thinking like, okay, if this is on a poster or if it's used, you know, if it's in the hallways, how will students connect with this? And I think about the students that I mentor at various campuses. If they saw a poster that said, be a better critical thinker or be a problem solver, I don't know that they could apply that in those moments. I mean, those are really good words and we understand what they mean. But when they're, when they see words like, learn and grow from your challenges, persist and adapt to find new solutions, learn from every experience, have the courage to do what is right, even if it's not easy or popular, be honest and trustworthy. I think those are words that we, that students can connect to. So I see a lot of value in that, if that's who we're trying to, to influence and to encourage and to grow. So just my, my thought while I'm sitting here. Thank you.
Natalie.
The, I think there's an interesting question in, can two thoughts exist at the same time? Can you be the very best and still want to be better? I think you can be the very best and still want to be better. And that's why I think that's the privilege of serving in Cyfair. As a, of being a parent in Cyfair first, being a taxpayer or citizen, but also serving on this board, is that you can be the very best and still ask the hard questions to see who, where are we not working? We're working better than any system I know. And I've worked in systems, I've worked in the area, I know people across the state. So I have said it on the record about 100 times, saying this is the very best and finest district, definitely in the region. I don't know others as well, but we are a fine, fine school district. So please make sure when we ask the critical questions, that's actually what we're supposed to do. We're here to ask the question to say, is there any last kid that we haven't figured out what to do for? And what do we do for that kid? And because it doesn't come out expressly in the data, but if you do some math, you find out, we still had last year on 2122 accountability data, better than any district around. This number is not worse than any district around, it's better. But we still had 9,409 economically disadvantaged kids who took the STAR test in grade three through 10, 9,409 who didn't reach the status of approaches. So which is considered a passing score. So I just say that for that parent of that kiddo, I just want to ask the question, is there anything else we can do for you? Not because we're not a beautiful, amazing district, because no other district can do it. We can ask those questions because we have such an incredible staff, such an incredible administration, such amazing teachers, because we do care. Like our health teachers were here talking about way bigger things they're concerned about in the health of our kids and the well-rounded nature of our kids. We're positioned to be the one district that can do this because our issues are less. They're smaller, we're better, we're more amazing. And so I just want to say, can those two thoughts exist? Can you be the very best and still be better? I think none of us would have signed up to, for this thankless unpaid job if we didn't believe that to be true. And all of us signed up to work for that. And our amazing administration signed up to work for that, to come. And they made it this district, they made it the school. Mark Henry on this building is because they made this the district where we can have the conversations about the few kids left behind. And so I'm super proud to serve. It's not criticism. It's nice and easy to have those conversations behind closed doors because it's safer. I understand, I was a principal, I had the scores on my shoulders, I carried that weight. I know what it's like, it's public, your public reputation and shame. But we are amazing. And still, we have some work to do for a few kids that we haven't got there yet. So let's do it together. We don't have to fight each other for that, let's get it done.
The point is, yes, we have achieved high. The goal is to achieve at a higher level. As trustees, we always have to be careful what words we choose. Words have meaning, the manner in which we place those questions have meaning. Agenda item 4A. The Board will consider approving the minutes of the April 10, 2023 regular board meeting. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. May we move this to the consent agenda? Holly? Where is Holly? There you are. There you are. You know, just like I'm holding on to the past, I'm holding on to the old boardroom. Yeah, I kind of liked it when I could see you right there. 4B, the Board will consider approving budget amendments for the period of January 1 through March 31, 2023. There are no speakers this evening. Karen, do you have a brief presentation? Where is Karen?
No, sir.
She switched sides.
She did switch sides. However, we had a full and complete package in our board book. Let me look to the left, any questions? Yes, Natalie.
I just was interested in the source of revenue. Let me see if I can find it, I tried to screenshot, but then all those pages. When it said that we had a state program revenue. State program revenues from TEA in the amount of $281,140 on page Eek. I just wondered what that's, what that was. I'm sorry, it's on page. Oh, what is this? Five, no, no, not five, excuse me. Six. On page seven of the report, the line item 5820 is the budget code there.
I am looking for that, I'm in time and trouble. Oh, here, okay. This is just, this is related, I'm sorry, this is related to food service. And it's just a little bit amount of the state revenue that we get related to food service.
Thank you.
Yes, it's just food service.
Karen always have my standard question. Is there anything in particular that you want to draw our attention to?
I think the only thing that I would share is, that's a good thing, is that when the budget was first adopted, interest rates were not looking very good at the time. So we had less than $2 million in the budget for interest income. But our interest, you know, you know, the rates have been going up. And so it's gone from, it's about $20 million that we had this year. So that's been a nice pleasant surprise.
Thank you, and that did show up, but I think it needed to be highlighted, so I appreciate that. May we move this to consent, looking to the right, left? Holly, please. 4C, the Board will consider approving the TEAC certification 2023-2024. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. Presenters, Kristi Jerome, Dr. Linda Macias. Questions only. Let me look to the right, questions? To the left, questions? Glenda, I have a question. It's unpleasant, but it has to be asked. So in this content, because it's my signature that goes on this document, I noticed. And I'll do that, I've sent, signed 10 Ks and 10 Qs and S1s. So I know who they sue if anything goes wrong. First question. Is there anything to do with critical race theory involved in this curriculum that I'm certifying?
No, that is not a part of any of the texts.
Okay. There's a section in there where we could have gone to an outside source that would review our material. But I noticed when we checked the boxes that we did not do that. Comment, should we do that? Why didn't we do that? Do we need to do that?
Some of the, the items or textbooks that are, that are listed here are actually on the commissioner's list and the ESPEC, on ESPEC. And, yeah, State Board of Education. And, and, and others are not. I am confident that we have qualified professionals in every content area that are well versed in the texts. And along with teachers, because everything pretty much that we select, we have a teacher committee that's a part of it. So I'm confident in, in their analysis and my analysis of the material that we have and that it meets the texts.
Very good. Then one other question. And I'll change the, the style this time. Dr. Henry, you are the superintendent. And do you believe that, that we can in fact make this certification?
Yes, sir.
Very good. That being the question, I think that answers all my questions. May we move this to the consent agenda? And Marty, for this as part of the motion, do I need a motion to authorize me to sign or will I already have that authority to sign?
The agenda is for the board to approve. So if there was someone other than the board president, I would probably recommend more specifics in the motion. But generally speaking, when the board signs off on something, it is typically the board president.
Very good, thank you. 4D, the Board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as recommended in the posted agenda item. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. We do have a number of sub-points, I'm going to call each of them and then ask for questions or comments. 4D1, 2023 Jarvis Transportation Center Electric Bus Charging Stations. That was a fun read. 4D2, 2023 Thornton Middle School Paving Improvements. Questions?
Scott.
Yes, I have a question on the charging stations, for whoever filled that.
Yes, sir, if I can't answer it, we'll get Dr. Smith on here.
No problem. How long does it take to charge a school bus?
Like I said, if I can't answer it, I'll get Dr. Smith.
Dr. Smith. Sorry to push your buttons on that one. Should we ask Roy?
Good afternoon. With a bus that's pretty much out of charge, on a slow charge system, it's going to take roughly eight to 12 hours. On a fast charge system, it can take as little as four hours.
And so if you do a slow charge system, what's the, what's the mileage? What's the maximum range of a electric school bus?
On these that we're procuring, they're, it's about 110 to 120 miles. And our average route, morning and afternoon, combined is about 90 miles.
So I guess, and how many buses do we, do we authorize last time? I forgot the number.
10.
10 buses?
Yes, sir.
So I guess we can't use these buses for long haul routes, correct?
We'll still have our diesel, gasoline, our propane buses that we can utilize for field trips.
And I saw in here the charging stations for 60 watt and also 120 watt, is that correct?
Sir?
The, the charging stations in here are for 60 watt and 120 watt?
Correct, yes, sir. We have one 120 watt and four 60 watt chargers that we're, that we have already procured.
And how many buses can you charge at one time?
Two. Each one of those, each one of those can charge two at a time.
Two at a time and we have, how many buses?
10. So we'll be able to plug in all 10 at one time.
Oh, we can, okay, that was my question. Great, making sure and saying that. And are these, I was reading some, some articles about this because it's been in the news a lot. Are these the smart charging stations, whereas they cycle through and they intelligently do this? Because I know the cost of electricity is pretty high right now.
Yes, sir, we can actually have, we'll have a dashboard where we can actually charge buses at whatever time of the day we want, off peak hours, during peak hours. We can actually funnel a charge to a specific bus that may be lower and do a faster charge on that bus to get it ready for a route. We'll be able to control all that from a dashboard on our, on our computers.
And the last question, is the battery in these, these buses? What's the average cost in replacing the battery in these?
I'll have to get back to you on that one, I can't remember the average cost off the top of my head. I know they're warranted for seven years with an expectancy of 12.
If you can get that, just curious.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Natalie.
Thank you. Interesting, I'm not sure, there's one question maybe we don't know yet. But one of my questions was when, and seeing that we now added the charging and those, I wondered the expense of, how much it costs that's in totality for this, these buses versus a traditional bus? And then also, maybe I'll give both, because I know we haven't lived the benefits yet. But what are the benefits versus, you know, what are the benefits or not, I guess?
Well, going from a internal, like a traditional internal combustion engine vehicle to an electric vehicle, you're moving from a lot of moving parts to very few moving parts. So you don't have the engine, you don't have the oil changes, you don't have the volatility of gasoline, diesel, fuel prices that you have to budget for. And I have to go back and ask Karen for more money when fuel goes up. So we don't have to worry about that piece of it. Talking to some other school districts who have been running electric buses for an extended period of time, seven, 10 years, they're seeing a significant cost savings. We're fortunate where we bought these buses on grant. So a $390,000 bus effectively cost us the same price as a diesel bus. And the overall cost of ownership for an electric bus at full cost can be comparable to a diesel bus over a 10, 12, 15 year span. And that just comes with the traditional maintenance you have to do on a diesel or gasoline vehicle, brake changes, oil jobs, regular preventative maintenance. You don't have that on an electric vehicle. Effectively, we're going to be changing lights. We'll change the brakes. With the regenerative braking, brakes on electric school buses have lasted seven years plus without having to change because you're basically one pedal driving the vehicles because of the regenerative braking. So overall, cost of ownership on the, on these vehicles is going to be significantly lower. And districts who have operated these for several years have seen that.
Looking to my left, Lucas.
I'm going to beat Tom to his question. This is a, I'm looking at the bid amounts. So, the winning bid here for Highland Electric Fleets. Yeah, I knew that was happening. So, I'm looking at the bid, and generally speaking, this, the winning bid is 641K. It's about 46% of the second lowest bid at $1,199,000. And the others are above that, you know, basically double. What's the confidence that we have that we're not going to see change orders in the future that raise that amount significantly? Do you trust this low bid? That is a huge margin of error or distance between the other bids.
That is a huge margin. And that was the question I had when the tabulation was brought to me. So, we scheduled, number one, Highland Electric Fleets is a national company that does this all over the country. They purchase electric buses, lease electric buses, they provide infrastructure for electric buses. So, when we saw this number, we got with our architect and engineering team, we had a scheduled Zoom meeting where there's CFO, there's CEO, and there's local representative. We had Mr. Crawford in the room, Mr. Smith in the room. And Mr. Smith is from, or Dr. Smith, I'm sorry. This one's so easy, you let me answer it, didn't it? Dr. Smith in the room, and we talked to him about this. We made sure we went through the entire scope of the project, made sure that all their numbers were good, we expressed our concerns. They assured us that they had captured everything within the scope of this project. They could meet this in budget and on time. So, we are recommending that award.
Okay, have we used this vendor before?
We have not.
I'm assuming that this is, the answer is yes here, but I'll ask it anyway. So, in your discussions with other districts, had they used this vendor before?
They have done a lot of infrastructure and electric buses throughout the country. Again, Dr. Smith is very familiar with them. I think he's had several conversations with them at national and state conventions.
As we've gone through rapid construction cycles, just generally speaking, when you're doing your budgeting, what do you typically bake in for people that need to do change orders or something goes awry from plan?
Well, we have a contingency. We usually do about 4% of the contract amount for contingency.
And does that usually hold?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions you were going to ask? I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Debbie?
So, I didn't hear you specifically say this, but I, can I assume correctly that we checked references with other specific school districts as to the questions that Mr. Scanlon asked about, you know, reliability? And that those, that we did that?
That's part of our evaluation process. When they submit their bids, they submit references, yes, ma'am.
And then, if I recall correctly, from the 2014 bond, the life expectancy of our other types of buses is about 12 years. Is that correct? So, this is the same? Okay, thank you.
And what we're purchasing here are not charging stations. This contract is for the infrastructure for the charging stations that were awarded in the grant. So, that's what we're doing here. That's true.
Julie? The, so there is one question, and I do have to tip my hat. Scott, well done, well researched, as well as Lucas. Those are the questions I would ask. Natalie would remind me those questions have nothing to do with academic attainment. But, yeah, we do have to get the kids to school. So, once again, I'm holding on to the past. For electric charging stations, do we have any concerns about high water?
No, sir. Number one, this is Jarvis Transportation Center. This is the new one that we're doing this in, and we did a lot of mitigation when we're doing this project. And we have a new detention pond out there, so we're not concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
May we move this to consent, looking to my right, to my left, Holly? 4E, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. There are three. 4E1, practices and procedure review and cybersecurity assessment. Quote, 4E2, property and workman's compensation, stop-loss insurance. 4E3, yearbook services. There are no speakers on any of these this evening. Let me look to my left this time, Lucas, questions? While you're thinking, let me move to Debbie. Julie?
I do have a question regarding 4E1, the practices and procedure review and cybersecurity assessment quote. It's actually the opposite of what Mr. Scanlon asked earlier. The vendor that was selected is actually significantly higher than the others. And I appreciate the additional backup information that was provided. And it appears that there was a very thorough process to select that vendor. Is there additional information you would like to share with us regarding that?
I mean, I'll take a page out of Matt Morgan's book and invite Paula Ross up to the podium.
Paula, did you actually sit on the very last row?
Yes, sir, I did. Okay, to address your question, the district issued a request for quotes for qualified candidates on the cooperative list. And we had three responses. One respondent withdrew because their contract on DIR expired. The second, the second lower-cost respondent was a very good response. And we actually did a best and final between the last two. But the selected or recommended vendor is a very comprehensive approach to look at our network and cybersecurity holistically. With that, just a couple of points. They have, they're proposing a 22-week assessment in three phases. Phase one would evaluate the current security policies and determine the design effectiveness and governmental policies. Phase two would evaluate our current security controls. And phase three would perform vulnerability and assessment. So, we felt like this comprehensive approach would be more effective.
No, I appreciate that explanation, because, I mean, as we've discussed as a board, cybersecurity is a primary focus for us and for the district. So, I appreciate that we are investing in a partnership with someone who can really dig into that and provide us with some good information. So, thank you.
No, just point out, I mean, we talked about this earlier, this very issue, why the low bidder. And all bids aren't the same when we are selecting consultants especially. You want the best consultant to meet the needs of the district. And I'm comfortable that we made the right decision here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Natalie? May we move this to the consent agenda, to the right? Oh, Lucas, you have a question, I'm sorry. Microphone?
Thank you. Echoing something that Scott just said, and as someone who's been doing consulting a very long time, I would run for the hills for someone putting the assessment phase that low, because they're not answering the right questions. So, I am much more comfortable with the approach that you took, Paula, and what you're recommending here, especially for the needs of our district and just for the audience. Every day, we're getting more intrusion attacks. Every day, people that would attempt to be bad actors or just simply make bad decisions or, you know, mistakenly submit to a phishing scam, that just increases. So, I'm agreeing with the rest of my colleagues. I support the approach here, this is money well-spent that's going to protect our data, our kids, our teachers.
One closing comment, if I will. This company has worked with several K-12 and higher ed throughout the state and across the nation. And there's a very large school district on the West Coast that September of 2022 was compromised. And this company came in and is helping them to remedy their environment.
Thank you, Paula. And that's a good point. We've been very fortunate that we have not had a major breach. That doesn't mean that one won't happen. What experts in the field have told me, it's not a question, will you or not? You will, the only question is one of time. And your job is to push it off into the future as far as you can before it actually hits. I appreciate the questions from my colleagues, because I think they're right on point. So, may we move this to consent agenda, right and left, Holly? If you would, please. We're now down to 4F. The board will consider approving the district's hazardous traffic condition resolution as required by TEA to receive supplemental transportation funding. No speakers on this topic this evening. Questions only, looking to my rights, Scott, Natalie, Lucas, Debbie, Julie. Move this to consent agenda, everybody. Holly, consent agenda. 4G, and there are a host of these. Vice President Heinemann? My voice is just about shot. So, if you would handle 4G through 4L. Reading these, also identify if there's a speaker or not on any of these. And then, I'll pick it up at that point. Thank you.
Yes, sir. 4G, the board will consider making a determination that good cause did not exist as required by law for Patricia Babino, Jennifer Benegas, Stephanie Galagonza, Stephanie Hollis, Leslie Jack, Julia Roberson, Carrie Rogers, Pamela Shin, and Marcus Stevens to resign their respective employment contracts. This item will be discussed in closed session this evening pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. There are no speakers this evening. 4H, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to Megan Swanson that her employment with the district under probationary contract is proposed for termination and authorize the president of the board to notify Ms. Swanson of the proposed action pursuant to 21.103 of the Texas Educator Code. This item will be discussed in closed session this evening pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. There are no speakers this evening. 4I, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to Michelle Benson that her employment with the district under probationary contract is proposed for termination and authorize the president of the board to notify Ms. Benson of the proposed action pursuant to 21.103 of the Texas Educator Code. This item will be discussed in closed session this evening pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. There are no speakers this evening. 4J, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to Rick Barrett that his employment with the district under continuing contract is proposed for termination and authorize the president of the board to notify Mr. Barrett of the proposed action pursuant to 21.156 of the Texas Education Code. This item will be discussed in closed session this evening pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. There are no speakers this evening. 4K, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to Megan Dunn that is proposed her employment with the district under a term contract be non-renewed. It is further recommended that the president of the board notify the teacher of the proposed action to terminate her employment pursuant to 21.206 of the Texas Education Code. This item will be discussed in closed session this evening pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. There are no speakers this evening. Item 4L, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to Clover Bolden that her employment with the district under probationary contract is proposed for termination and authorize the president of the board to notify Ms. Bolden of the proposed action pursuant to 21.103 of the Texas Educator Code. This item will be discussed in closed session this evening pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. There are no speakers this evening.
We will now proceed with the discussion portion of the agenda 5A. The board will discuss the superintendent's evaluation. This item will be discussed in closed session this evening pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. The way this works, we were all, we have a board monitoring system, which is primarily a monitoring system for the district, but it's an evaluation system for the superintendent. All trustees were requested to present a written evaluation, submit that. I requested additional time, because not all trustees had time to submit that written evaluation. I'm pleased to report that all but one have, in fact, submitted that written evaluation as requested. 5B, the administration will discuss the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. This item will be discussed in closed session this evening pursuant to 551.076 of the Texas Government Code. We will review this in greater detail in closed session, but there is a brief presentation to be made this evening. The presenters would be Chief Eric Mendez, Scott Hudson, and Teresa Hall. And I don't know who's going to go first. I suspect it'll be Mr. Scott Hudson.
Good evening, President Jackson, Dr. Henry, Board of Trustees.
Your microphone, please, sir.
Hello, all right, there we go. Start again. Good evening, President Jackson, Dr. Henry, and Board of Trustees. I'm here this evening to provide an update on the state's intruder detection audits that have occurred since last month's meeting. As a reminder, the directive from the governor was for 100% of all school districts to be audited, with 75% of that district's campuses completed by the end of the school year. And we are getting close to approaching that goal. I have some updated information from what you see on the slide. There are 60 campuses that have now been audited to date, and there have been no findings during Phase 1 of the audit at any campus. And additional correction, there are 13, not 14, middle schools that have been completed. 33 campuses have successfully passed all phases of the audit. During the time period indicated on the slide, 12 campuses were completed with eight campuses passing all phases of the audit and four campuses having findings. The corrective action plans for those four campuses were discussed and approved at the District Safety and Security Committee meeting on April 27th. That completes my report.
Any questions? And remember, colleagues, we can answer, we can ask all kinds of very detailed questions in private, but anything that was presented in general can be asked at this time if there are any questions.
Mr. Hudson, would you just clarify for the board and the audience, when you state no findings for Phase 1, what that includes, though?
Sure. During Phase 1, the very first phase is when the state auditor approaches the campus unannounced and attempts to gain unauthorized or unsecured entry into a campus. And I'm very proud to say that out of the 60 campuses that we have had audited, there have been no Phase 1 findings.
I would make the observation that of the other findings, we have certain standards within the district that are higher, that are not required. And so, not all of our campuses live up to those higher standards that we set for ourselves. And we'll discuss those more in private. But the major one is, could an intruder gain access? And at no point in time on any campus thus far, we still have some to go, has that unidentified person been able to do so? And that's it. Now, granted, we have other layers that we put in that we want to be tested. But the primary layer that is required of all has not been penetrated. So, thank you, Mr. Hudson.
President Jackson?
Yes, sir.
One comment, not a question, just for the viewing audience. Part of this ent...
campus has processes they use, correct, to be able to support a discipline among the staff to keep doors shut, such as these doors, and prevent intrusion. And so just identifying some of the creativity that our principals choose to use, one of those programs is watchdog dads. And so I would be remiss if I didn't mention my own principal, my daughter's principal sitting in the first row, where as a watchdog dad, you were told, this is what you're going to do, and part of that process is check every single door, check every single lock, and that is done every single day. So, thank you, Ms. Fakers. And for all of our principals out there, and just isolating that part of the reason that we have this kind of result, and it's, we're not doing it necessarily to pass a test, we're doing it for the safety of our kids, but the test helps validate what we do all the time, anyway.
Correct.
I'm grateful that we had this result. It simply reflects our discipline. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good comments. Julie, did you have a comment? No. Tonight, I reminded my colleagues to watch their words. There's a gentleman sitting in the second row, a little to my right, Mr. George Edwards, former trustee. My rookie year, he made a point of one time calling me and a couple of times after board meetings, suggesting that I needed to be careful with my word choice. So George, I appreciate the advice you gave me. I think it was good advice. It took me a while to understand what you were telling me. Nobody's ever accused me of being a fast learner, but there were words I needed to hear, and they may have been unpleasant for you to say, but I needed to hear those, just like I felt it necessary to make comments tonight in the same vein. It's something we do for each other as trustees, and we do it for the benefit of this district, for our children, and also our staff. I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I would also like to thank those who are watching from home. May I have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion before we go into closed session?
Mr. Jackson, I just, I just wanted to thank again, PBK. I've been here 12 years. What a beautiful building they designed and have put together that's going to last the next 50, 60 years. So Eric and team, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned to closed session. This board will not reconvene in open session this evening, but if you want to hang around, do so. Good night.